Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, February 26, 2020 is now called to order. Please take a moment to silence your devices. Ms. Zarnowitz, would you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Badami.
Here.
Commissioner Tavana.
Here.
Commissioner Birch.
Here.
Commissioner Hudes.
Here.
Commissioner Barnett.
Here.
Vice Chair Janoff.
Here.
And Chair Hanson.
Here. Next, I would ask that everyone stand and join Commissioner Hudes in the Pledge of Allegiance. As the Planning Commission conducts this meeting this evening, on behalf of the Town Council and residents of Los Gatos, we encourage active participation, which is essential for democracy and critical to the work of the Planning Commission. That participation can occur through, number one, written comments about agenda items that are submitted to the staff prior to a meeting are always welcome and helpful. Second and third, during our meeting, there are two opportunities for members of the public to participate. First, during the verbal communications period, an individual may speak on any topic not on the agenda. And during the hearing on a specific agenda item, any member of the public may speak about that item that is on the agenda. Should you wish to address the commission tonight during verbal communication period or during the consideration of an item on the agenda, please complete a speaker card located on the back of the benches where you are seated, and please turn the card into a staff member. Please put your name clearly. When you speak, I ask that you come up to the podium and adjust the microphone so that you are speaking directly into it. Please state your name and address for the record. And in fairness to all who want to speak at this meeting, it is requested that you limit your comments to three minutes. So we have now come to the verbal communications portion of our meeting. Members of the public are invited to address the commission on any issue not on the agenda of tonight's meeting. Please remember that there is a three-minute time limit. When the yellow light comes on, you will have 30 seconds left, and when the red light comes on, that means your time has expired. Do we have any cards for verbal communications? All right, seeing none, then we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is our consent calendar. Tonight, we have one item, consent item, to be acted upon in a single motion. Before the Planning Commission acts on the consent calendar, any member of the public or the commission may request that any item be removed from the consent agenda. At the chair's discretion, items removed may be considered either before or after the public hearings portion of the agenda. Tonight, we have one item on the consent calendar, and it is the approval of the minutes from our January meeting. Do we have a motion on the consent calendar? Commissioner Hudes.
I would move to approve, but I had one minor correction, a typo on the minutes. Where it refers to recommend to city council, I believe it should be recommend to town council.
So your motion is to approve the minutes subject to changing city to town?
Right.
Okay, is there a second? Commissioner Barnett, seconds? All right, any discussion? Then I will call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, so the motion passes unanimously, and we move on to our public hearings. We have three public hearing items on the agenda, all items related to the Town of Los Gatos. And the first one is item number two, which is to recommend a preferred land use alternative framework for the general plan update to town council. This is a defined item in the process of updating the general plan through 2040. We are to consider the recommendation of the GPAC from January 30th and determine what recommendation we will make to the town council regarding the preferred land use alternative framework, and the town council will consider this matter in March. Ms. Armour, I understand you will be giving the staff report this evening, and I would also like to say for the audience that because this is a town special project over a number of, over a two-year period, we won't be using the five-minute applicant time for speaking. The consultants will be speaking a little longer, so.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair Commissioners. The item in front of you is the Preferred Land Use Alternative Recommendation to you from the General Plan Update Advisory Committee, and provided to you for your review, consideration, and recommendation to town council. Tonight, we have the town's consultant, Rick Rust of Mintier-Harnish, with a presentation for you before you start your discussion of this item. Mintier-Harnish is the consultant that has worked with the town and supports us through this process. Their presentation will include a discussion, a summary of the general plan update process, the land use alternatives process, and the GPAC Preferred Alternative. This concludes staff's portion of the presentation, but I will now hand it off to Rick Rust for the consultant's presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, and Planning Commissioners, and to the public. Tonight, we'd like to give you a brief overview of the land use alternatives process and where we're at, and a little bit about the general plan, too, for the audience that is watching this evening. So as we go through this, we want to talk a little bit about what is the general plan for our audience members. So this is required by state law. Every jurisdiction, city or county in the state, must have a general plan to represent its blueprint for the future, and it really represents the community's vision for where they want to be in the year 2040. Now, the town council at the beginning of this process laid out five key issues they would like to have addressed: land use, transportation and mobility, environmental sustainability, evaluation modification of objective standards, that's relative to housing, and fiscal stability and responsibility. Now, in addition to that, we're also looking at the entire general plan, and we'll be working with the GPAC over the next few months to look at the individual elements that make up that plan and talk about the policy components. Tonight, we're just talking about the actual land use alternative. Now, as far as a state element, you now have to have nine of them included in your document. Now, you don't have to have them specifically called out with these names. Many jurisdictions combine them, and we also talk about having some optional elements that reflect the needs of the locality. Now, as we do this, one of the big changes that we'll be going through is addressing new state laws. One of the biggest guides to this is the new state guidelines for general plans, which was published in 2017. A copy you can download by going to the project website for this project, which is losgatos2040.com, and you can obtain a copy of the general plan guidelines, which gives you a great look at what the state expects out of the different elements of a general plan. Part of this is looking at what laws have changed over time, and there's a wide range of items that we're going to have addressed: environmental justice, enhancing the complete streets components that are already in the town's planning, looking at vehicle miles traveled as far as how we might change for transportation impacts going forward, wildfire and how to better protect. This project is partly supported by a grant from CAL FIRE, and CAL FIRE has been an active participant in providing us some guidance on how to enhance the city, the town's policies regarding protection for wildfire. So these are all things that we're going to have to look at going forward in the overall planning process. Now, that planning process, these aren't equivalent little blocks, so, you know, we're at least past the halfway point, but we're starting to get into the important and exciting components that make the plan move forward. As I said, we're looking at the land use alternatives. This is an opportunity, as we have throughout the process, to update the Planning Commission and to provide your guidance to the town council at key steps in the process. The land use alternatives will guide a lot of the combinations of what we have to do. Some of the things we do in policy, though, will affect the outcomes of the land use alternatives, so this will be something you're not one and done tonight. You're giving us your guidance for where you'd like the land use alternative to go. This will get further refined as we do the policy document, and we'll come back for your approval again when we have a public draft document for hearings and review at that point. So not a final decision, but we'd certainly like to make sure we're in the right place. The next steps are developing the policies, and as I mentioned, we'll be doing that with the GPAC over the next couple of months. Now, developing the document, we have had a number of public input events. There's a complete list, starting at the bottom of page 13 of your staff report. Springing to Green was a great event we had last April 14th, which brought a lot of people that don't normally get involved in workshops and normal Planning Commission events, or town councils for that matter, to be involved in the general plan and understand what we're doing and give their input. We're expecting to be part of your Springing to Green again this year, which is on April 19th this year, and engage people in the discussion about the future and alternatives and where we're going for these next steps. Now, let's look at our land use alternatives, which is what we're here for tonight. As everything, we started off earlier looking at a vision and guiding principles. The vision statement provides what you envision. What would the town be like 20 years from now if you were to report back and how you would describe the community? What is it you're trying to achieve? Now, the Planning Commission reviewed this vision statement, as well as the guiding principles, on July 10th, and moved them forward to town council, who accepted them as being in the right direction with their modifications on August 20th. Again, all of this is subject to change until the final gavel comes down at the final document later in the year, but they did give our blessing from the Planning Commission and the town council on direction. We'll read that all for you tonight. It is available on the website if I may like to look at the details. There are nine guiding principles. The guiding principles, as you look at this, we start to get more refined in what we look at. The vision's the broad picture, the principles are some key directions that we'd like to take, and then each of the elements has a set of goals, policies, and implementations that get more and more refined about how we achieve the vision that's stated on that last slide. But our principles cover things such as transportation, sustainability, project protecting natural resources, fiscal sustainability and responsibility, government transparency, community vitality, diverse neighborhoods, inclusivity, and the promotion of public safety. So this provides a guide for where we're going with our policies, and these will be important as we look at the policy documents in the next few months. Now, the land use alternatives, we looked at, we created four. The names aren't that important because whether one's medium, high, or low, it's all relative to what they actually say about your future rather than what it might be named. But we looked at developing some alternatives with the GPAC. We talked originally about looking at the 2,000 unit as being a key factor for our future. Why is that number there? Well, the state gives us a regional housing needs allocation, which states how many housing we need to develop over given time periods. Now, the town does not have the numbers that will be coming up another year for where the town needs to go in its next cycle, but we're looking at having about three cycles, and the last cycle was about 600 housing units, so for our 20-year period, the 2,000 number kind of was in the right place. And the alternatives report also talks about some other projections from the Department of Finance, as well as our own economists, looking at different growth rates, and that 2,000 number is approximately correct in that context as well. Now, we looked at the land use alternatives. We were really looking at modifications to residential density and infill potential that might occur in the town. As you're well aware, there's not a whole lot of vacant land lying around to be developed. The north 40 was one of your last big pieces, and that's already been plotted out for its use, so we're looking at more of a redevelopment construct. To do this, we identified a number of opportunity areas. These opportunity areas are areas that provide us, either through their location, their existing infrastructure or access, roadway capacity, incompatibility with adjacent uses, typically near intersections or corridors. These are areas that might be able to sustain a little higher development potential than other parts of the community. And these are the seven areas that were identified as part of that. Want to note that in all of this, we're looking more at the residential. We have looked at a lot of mixed-use development as part of the community's future. We have a zero loss assumed as far as commercial space within our current commercial corridors. That is, if we're going to build it, we're going to replace the commercial that's there with at least as much as is there today, or perhaps more, as we add residential on top of those types of units in a mixed-use construct. Now, the scope of what we looked at is the five land use designations on the side. We looked at areas that were designated low-density residential, medium-density residential, high-density residential. We also looked at neighborhood commercial and mixed-use commercial, both of which can provide residential components within those designations. Now, we looked at both inside the opportunity areas, and again, they had a higher amount of density potential in the opportunity areas, but we also looked at some potential for redevelopment that might occur throughout the rest of the town, only for these five designations. You will notice there's a number of designations that aren't in this discussion. For instance, Hillside Residential was kind of off the table, if you will. We weren't looking at this as an opportunity to provide future housing opportunities because of the wildfire risk on the community's edge. We'll note in our slide, the Central Business District downtown. We'll asterisk that because the GPAC at their last meeting did request that we add an opportunity area for the downtown as part of their recommendation. So as I mentioned, we look at several factors. We look at redevelopment percentage, that is, how much do we assume will change over the next 20 years? What percentage of an area and its land area would change? And then we look at density ranges, and we did look at how these might be increased, and that's how we achieved the 2,000 units, is by increasing some of the densities, increasing or looking at what the redevelopment potential would be. On a lot of the tables, you'll also see something called typical density. When we talk to the state about housing production, they don't allow us to look at maximum density. We have to look at what would be typical within that designation. And so you'll see on the tables a range of typical densities in these columns here, and those are, if you look at the simple math, you look at the number of acres times the percent redevelopment times the typical densities, these get you towards the units that we're going to be developing going forward. So we've got lots of tables in your staff report, as well as available in the alternatives report that's online. One of the things with density, to hit a certain density, you have to start going up in height, and so these are the different height limits that would be associated with some of the alternatives. For alternative C in the opportunity areas, that's a four-story maximum in those areas. Then in the alternatives report, you had a series of these maps. Now, the alternatives report has, does not include the net accessory dwelling units. The GPAC did ask us to include that as a look for what might be in these future options. Again, we're trying to look at what would be the new land uses. As you look at these tables in here, this is the number, the net new dwelling units that came from doing that math that I talked about. This is the net new accessory dwelling units. This is basically 20 accessory dwelling units per year, which is pretty in line with the town has been seeing, plus an additional five accessory dwelling units that would be considered junior units, and that is a unit that's inside of an existing home. This gives us our total new, and this is the number that we're really looking at as we compare our different alternatives. 475 is a number that's consistent throughout all the alternatives. 475 is a number that's consistent throughout all the alternatives, and that's the number that the town currently has as pending or approved. For instance, some of the Part One of the North Forty are in that number there. In fact, about 75% of those units come from the North Forty first phase. So these maps give you that kind of look. I did want to point out, since we have this map up here, when we talk about areas outside the opportunity areas, that would be the areas that are colored on this map. Again, those are the designations we're looking at for potential infills or redevelopments in the future, but at a much lower density and expectation for redevelopment percentage. So again, we have 1181 here. We have 1916 here, so we're very close on B. We have 2328 for Alternative C, and 3201. Got some questions as to why did you perhaps include even A? And we wanted to make sure that we provided a look at what kind of staying the same and not doing a whole lot would turn up. And it didn't turn up a whole lot, as you saw in meeting that 2,000-unit number. So again, that's why we wanted to give the G-PAC a good range to look at in their considerations. And the G-PAC did take time and do a lot of consideration of this. We had four meetings with the G-PAC that addressed different aspects of the alternatives development process, whether it was looking at the opportunity areas and identification of those, whether it was looking at the different alternatives and the different assumptions that would be used. The last meeting the G-PAC held concerning this is on January 30th. At that time, to discuss community feedback, we did have a community workshop in mid-January where we had some individuals come and have a look at the different alternatives and provide some feedback that the G-PAC used in their final consideration on this. Majority of G-PAC members agreed that alternatives A and D did not meet the direction. That is, Alternative A was too low. It didn't hit that 2,000. And Alternative D was, in a term being too intense for what the town needed. So the G-PAC narrowed down on Alternative C as a basis for looking forward. Alternative C does exceed the 2,000 net dwelling units that were required or part of their original goal for the development of the alternatives. It allows a maximum height of 50 feet or four stories. I will caveat, this will be something we'll look at this. These could be some of the pieces that could change as we look at policies. For instance, we didn't have a chance with the G-PAC to talk about downtown, which has a 45-foot height right now, and that may be considered to be staying the same as we go to those areas. So those are the kind of things where policy starts to come in and make some tweaks as we move forward. The big thing in the G-PAC alternatives, as in all the alternatives, is providing for a wider range of housing types. A lot of the infill was seen as doing things like a duplex, where you might replace an older, single-family home with a duplex that reflects the same look and feel of the neighborhood. You've got something in your document that talks about the missing middle as far as housing. It explains in good detail about how you can put infill, where you're using a duplex or triplex, to keep within the character of the neighborhoods while at the same time providing better affordability and better access to housing for your entire population. Now, recommending the Alternative C as a framework for the downtown, that was the one change they made to Alternative C was to add the downtown area. The downtown was defined as the area that's currently in your general plan as a central business district, also, which is the C2 zoning designation. And the idea there was that there was more opportunity for housing, so the density in the downtown area will be allowed to go up a little bit in keeping with Alternative C. So you might go up to about a 26 as a typical, as opposed to a 20 DU's per acre, or dwelling units per acre, being typical in the downtown today. And again, the idea with the higher densities and intensities was that would encourage economic investment into these areas and thus provide the incentive to do these redevelopment-type projects. So here's your final numbers then for the G-PAC. The 1964, the 500, those all came from the original Alternative C. The 136 is the potential that would come out of doing the same kind of calculations in the downtown if we have that as an opportunity area. In your staff report and other materials, one thing the G-PAC did ask in their considerations is they wanted to see all the different breakdowns in case there was an idea to do a hybrid-type alternative. And so we broke things down by looking at the different alternatives, what were the different land use designations, et cetera, within those items. And these tables kind of give you a breakdown of some of that. Just wanted to point out here is the 26 we used for the Central Business District moving forward with that item. So that was a quick overview of what took the G-PAC to go through eight hours and much studying on their part to get through, but they've done a great job in getting us to this stage of the effort and providing some guidance for the Planning Commission's consideration. What we're looking for is for you to make a recommendation to the Town Council for their consideration, and the staff report lays out your considerations, which could be to accept with the G-PAC and forward that on. It could be to modify that or to continue this off for some further discussion as you feel appropriate. And with that, any questions? I'd be glad to help.
I will take questions from the Commission in a second. Could you please explain to the Commission what is going to happen after this meeting?
As I was mentioning, this is just to give us a nod. We're going in the right direction. We will take your recommendation up to the Town Council and convey to them what all this background, the alternatives report, the G-PAC actions, the public input, the Planning Commission's recommendations, and take that to Town Council and get their direction on what would be a preferred land use alternative. From that point, we'll be working with the G-PAC over the next few months on looking at each of the elements that are being proposed and look at the changes that are being proposed in the actual elements. That is, the goals, the policies, and implementations that make this happen. That document, once it comes back from the G-PAC, then will be brought to the Planning Commission, and you'll have a chance to look at that document and also go to Town Council to try to get a sense of, have a public draft, and then we can go off and do the environmental analysis on that document. And then you'll have another set of hearings to do the final approvals.
So the reason I ask the question is because a number of the G-PAC members had questions about what we had agreed to when we recommended Alternative C. And as I was understanding it, and I'm asking you the question, that we recommended a framework, but we weren't, we hadn't voted on recommending specific policy changes at this time because that will come later in the process.
Right. We're just doing this idea about the densities, the opportunity areas and locations. And again, that all may have an effect by looking at the policies. That may make some tweaks. As I mentioned, you may say the downtown will have a 45-foot height to stay consistent with the CBD. Other opportunities areas may be the 50-foot height. And those are discussions of policy that the G-PAC has not weighed in on yet.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'd like to ask if any of the commissioners, we have questions for the consultants or staff. Commissioner Hughes.
I had a lot of questions, but one is sort of, oh, I'm sorry, is related to overall questions about the process and everything. Was a participant in the last round, and so some of this is familiar and some of this is different. And so I wanted to make sure I understood. First of all, the timeframe for this. Our last general plan was adopted with a, with 10 years left on the clock. This one appears to have like 19 years or something like that. Is that, is that correct?
Well, the timeframe will start from when the Town Council adopts it. And right now, we're looking towards the early part of 2021 for that adoption. And then you'll have, yeah, I guess we call it a 2040 plan, so yeah, you'll have a little less than 20 years, but that's the idea.
So are there any implications of dealing with a longer time horizon in a general plan?
The state actually encourages that you do a long-term horizon, and typical in California is 20 to 25 years.
Okay. I had a couple other overall questions.
Go ahead.
So one of the other things I'm not that familiar with is the detail that we're getting on housing at this point. Some of that last time was in the housing element that followed the general plan here, and we're now down to tables and numbers and things like that. I'm also just not, a little bit off kilter on how do you look and evaluate alternatives if you haven't developed goals? And so it seems like we're trying to select between alternatives, yet the goals are not there yet. For instance, in the 2020 plan, there was a goal, LU4, to provide for well-planned, careful growth that reflects the town's existing character and infrastructure. And while we have some high-level goals, we don't have anything that specific in land use at this time. So the selection is, to me, is a little more challenging without goals.
There's quite a bit. From that standpoint, some of the land use pieces, it could be a chicken and egg conversation of which comes first, but for a lot of what goes into a document anymore, as far as environmental implications, as far as traffic implications, you can't run $70,000 traffic models on multiple choice options and come back with the right answers. We have to kind of get in a ballpark where we're going to look at before we turn loose all that analysis that needs to go to support that. Now, we did look at the different alternatives in a broad sense from traffic impacts, and that was included in the alternatives report. We had a small piece on fiscal, which will be enhanced as we go forward in the next steps. We did look at environmental protections, but because of the designations used, that was not a major issue. So we have incorporated some of those concepts in and based upon your old general plan as far as looking at what it was guiding, as well as the new vision and the new guiding principles. So we didn't start from a plain sheet of paper, but there are important things that we need to get in the right ballpark. Now, as I said, the G-PAC, the Planning Commission, and the Town Council will still have time to modify, make corrections, even before we start the environmental document, once we've gone to the next step of preparing the policy refinements. In doing this, this activity of doing the land use alternative and getting some buy-in on direction has been typical in every plan I've been involved in. Not to mean you couldn't do it the other way, but that's not atypical.
Thank you.
Commissioner Birch?
So this may not necessarily be a question. I kind of wanted to address the question from Commissioner Hudes from the G-PAC side. While we may not have technically written a land use policy that was guiding this, it came from a careful discussion of state housing requirements, where they stand today, and where we feel they are going to be moving into the future and taking into account that number, then taking a look at the town as an overall and where we felt these areas of designation where we could increase some density without actually impacting the general character of our town, or where by increasing the density, it created actually a better impact on that area, such as perhaps lofts in the downtown. So while it wasn't like a written, like what we already have, I felt like the G-PAC did a very good job of saying, these are characteristics that we like. This is where we know the state needs us to be, so let's carefully go through the town and see where we may be able to add another floor over retail or something along those lines to create those opportunity zones. So it, while it maybe wasn't a written policy or goal yet, it actually was taken from some very defined parameters. Does that help?
Yes. Thank you.
I would add on to, and thank you, Commissioner Birch, I would add on to that. For the benefit of the audience, the composition of the G-PAC includes all the members of the General Plan Committee, which is comprised of two members of Town Council, as well as three Planning Commissioners, Commissioner, Vice Chair Janoff, myself, and Commissioner Birch at the present. And then we have a number of at-large members to the General Plan Committee, as well as there are additional three residents that were appointed by Town Council to sit on the General Plan Advisory Committee specifically. So, so there was a lot of discussion, as Commissioner Birch mentioned, kind of going into this. And based on input from staff and the knowledge of all the people in the G-PAC, we felt like 2,000 was a good target number because the numbers that we're hearing from some of the jurisdictions that are on a different cycle than us are going to have much, much, much bigger numbers than they've ever had in the past. And they haven't gotten to Santa Clara County yet, where the housing crisis is about as bad as it can be. So that being the case, we're also relying very closely on the process that's been set by our consultants, who work with many, many jurisdictions to do this. And there were questions from a few G-PAC members about, you know, do you put the cart before the horse? But, but you have to follow a process, and so this is the process that, you know, that we're following, that the direction of our consultants to kind of move forward. And it, I think, as was mentioned, it's an iterative process in that any recommendation we make now, once we have more data and what the implications of that are, we might go back and make revisions. So having said that, are there other questions for the consultants or staff from the commissioners before I take public comments? Okay. So that being the case, now we will invite comments from members of the public. If you have not already turned in a speaker card to staff, please do so at this time. And when you're called to speak, remember to state your name and address for the record and adjust the microphone so that you speak directly into it, and you'll have three minutes. Do we have any members of the public that would like to make comments on this agenda item? Okay. 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 You could fill out your card later, so you could go to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and then please fill out a speaker card when you're completed.
So I'm Kim Bryan, and I live at 268 Marchmont Drive in Los Gatos. And I appreciate all the time and effort that many people have put into this process, and I admit freely that I just saw the first of the information when this, when this agenda came out. And the reason I came to speak is because I was quite alarmed at the delta that I see between the current town and the buildings that were put forth as potentials, with Plan C in particular, which is the one that was going to be recommended. So there was a lot of information in the Planning Commission agenda tonight about middle, the missing middle and the housing choices that can make that possible, like duplexes and fourplexes and tiny houses, and all of those things felt to me like a much better fit for Los Gatos, to find some areas in our town where we could maybe allow more buildings on a lot or, you know, think of ways to incorporate that. And even in the documentation provided, you know, one of the things that they said is that conventional zoning doesn't work and that a lot of the numbers we're using don't help you be able to add those buildings in. So I just wanted to put forth, the other thing that I had in my head was that when we got to North Forty, because we had approved heights that we thought were the maximum we wanted, but then based on all the laws from California, they were able to get bonuses and make them taller and bigger and get more units. And it seems to me like we are doing our best to go for a worst-case scenario of how many houses we'd need would be 2,000 and to overcompensate for that. And then when it actually gets to the developers, they might come in and they might add another floor and another number of units. And in particular, the empty car lot, the drawing that you had that was the options, the five- and six-story buildings that are allowed in Option C seem to me to be much larger than anything anywhere near there. And certainly, if you anticipated a Los Gatos Boulevard where there were many of those in a row. So I just wanted to encourage you to maybe take a slightly more conservative approach and take, or not conservative, but take the option B, which was not quite to the 2,000 but was close, and assume that at least let's see what happens with people being able to have secondary units on their property. Maybe it'll be more than the 500 that you were anticipating. You know, that gets us to 1,800. It keeps some of that height that, to me, was the biggest problem. I mean, when I looked at those drawings provided of, you know, what high-density housing looks like, this is allowed in Option C. So for me, that was something that I was surprised by and I did not expect to see. And I think that you will get some of the same late-to-the-game anger that was there for North Forty when people start realizing that things like that could be put on Los Gatos Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Does anyone have questions for the Commissioner Badami?
All right. So you referenced this missing middle housing study.
Yes.
So when I read through it, it talks about a number of housing styles that could fit into what's called middle, the missing middle study. And one of those is high-density housing.
Correct.
But you're opposed to that. I mean, you, you see more the, did you say the duplexes or the ADU's? You're not fond of the high-density housing with the height? Is that how I understand?
Correct. It's mostly the fact that right now, nothing in town is higher than 35 feet, and the minimum for these multi-densities is five stories, which is clearly at least 50, so.
If you did see that we had to do increase the stories, what would be the maximum that you could see anywhere in town?
When someone just mentioned, like, putting a third floor on top of two floors of retail, I mean, that seems to me like a much better fit than five stories. So I would say three.
Okay. And your thought process on four? And your thought process on four stories?
I mean, if we have to go to four stories, we can. It's just, I felt like when I was taking part as much as I could in the North Forty process, that there are these bonuses that the developers were getting based on following these rules that, so even though we had said the max was going to be 35, I think there were places they got higher than that. So, I just imagine if we are accepting that all along, like, one of the opportunity areas is quite long, so I think it's all along Los Gatos Boulevard. So, if they can come in and tear down a one-story retail and put in five-story high-density housing, I can just imagine that there would be a lot of people that would think that would be worthwhile, and that would definitely change the town. And the traffic in that intersection is the one that we're most worried about with North Forty, so it, to me, was not a good trade-off.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Birch?
Yeah, thank you for comments. You're right. I feel like sometimes we get pretty far in the process before people start reading up and asking questions, so I'm, no, I'm thanking you. I want to point out a couple of things, and then I'm going to ask a couple of questions. I do want to confirm for you that in Option C, that was the recommended, it is limited to four stories. And during our discussions that we had in the General Plan Meeting, was that a confirmation, I guess, to those of us that sit up here and see the applications, that these applications would still be coming to us to make sure that while that may be, like, you're allowed four stories, that doesn't mean carte blanche along a whole long corridor. We all had the same questions and comments that you had in hoping we could anticipate state needs, but also be very sensitive to the town. So, then my question for you is, because it's a little, I think, kind of newer on the plate, is I heard what you said about the Boulevard, but I'm curious what you feel about the downtown option of taking some of our one- or two-story retail and adding lofts on that? I don't know if you saw it very much.
I mean, to me, that's great, because I do support walking and biking, and then there's people that can live and eat and drink and, you know, live in the, get a more vibrant downtown. So, for me, that is a much better fit for what I would see for Los Gatos.
Perfect. Thank you.
Again, thank you for your comments. There's a card in the back. Thank you very much. If you could hand your speaker.
Leaf ago, 845 Lalik Way in Los Gatos. I just want to say that I agree absolutely with the previous speaker. She articulated very well, I think, the sentiment of a lot of folks in town, and I endorse what she said. The question of the height limit downtown on the plaza, the height limit, I believe, is 45 feet only in that area, on the plaza. The rest of it is 40 feet, and then in the neighborhood, it drops down. So, going to 45 feet downtown, retail at the bottom, using the post office as an example, because that tenant may be leaving, the post office may be moving out. If that is redeveloped, again, with retail on the bottom level, and then housing above, it makes sense going to that 40-foot, 45-foot height. Los Gatos Boulevard, I think, we saw the argument on, in both sides, on the Shannon Road interchange with Los Gatos Boulevard and the developer there, in trying to find the right height, the right setbacks from the sidewalks and so forth. I think using that discussion to help with some guidance will be very instructive for the developers coming in and helpful to keep the same look and feel, the famous look and feel of Los Gatos, so that it is not obstructing the hillsides and the views, and it is a more inviting pathway going down, up and down Los Gatos Boulevard. So, again, I really endorse the previous speaker, because she articulated very well those points.
Thank you for your comments. Do any Commissioners have questions? So, thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak on this topic? If you could give your speaker card to staff?
Hi, I'm Jan Marie. I live on Los Wing Court, and public speaking is not my thing, so I'll give this a try. I live near the development of 15975 Union Avenue, Blossom Hill and Union. The Planning Commission recommended against this development, and the Town of Los Gatos Council overrode the Planning Commission's recommendation. Those homes do not meet the mass, bulk, and height character of the town. In addition, they are elevated. So, I agree with the previous speaker's commentary that good intentions get modified when the developers come in and talk and offer street redevelopment, what do you call that? Stoplight redevelopment and things like this to incent the Town Council to deviate. So, I would highly recommend that we talk about, when we talk about height and stories, we talk about not having 11-foot first floors with the environmental impact of material use, long-term power for heating and cooling these buildings, so that, you know, four people live in a 3,000, 4,000 square foot home with 12-foot ceilings on the first floor and 10-foot ceilings in the little kids' bedrooms. They've changed the bulk of these spaces. They're perpetuating the lifetime of the residents of that home to waste electricity and heat. It's just environmentally unfriendly. And then, in addition, the impermeable surface area deviations that they've gotten to impact the, excuse me, the environment, the ability to have, what would you call it, carbon neutrals may be awfully strong, but they're the opposite. They don't have green space around these homes, and for three homes, they've put in 14 or 15 parking places. So, if you look at adding 2,300 dwelling units to this town, it sounds like it's four cars per dwelling unit, and you're truly changing the traffic just here. And then when you expand that to the context of the 85 corridor, you're compounding, negatively compounding life for the local residents. If you do not include parks, libraries, restaurants, and all the retail into your lifestyle planning that you have, you can't just increase density on Union Avenue of homes and not increase lifestyle businesses and environment, because then you've got everyone commuting to the downtown and creating this incredible congestion in the beautiful downtown. You've got to create neighborhood pockets. And I'll just finish with, I hope they're using baselines for planned communities that have been done in other parts of the country when creating this kind of a lifestyle, and that's the character of Los Gatos.
Thank you for your comments. Do any Commissioners have questions? Commissioner Birch?
Sorry. I hope I'm not commentating too much based on the G-PAC meetings, but I feel like it's important to share when people are bringing up points that we've discussed. Is that okay?
I think that is very well said, and I think that there's really no way to characterize the many, many, many hours of discussion on exactly these points that the G-PAC has had.
Okay. So, what I, a couple of comments. I hope that you will please pay attention, then, to the G-PAC meetings, because part of the requirements and the points that we will be moving into have a lot to do with the environment and sustainability. It actually is something the G-PAC has identified as something we care a lot about. We have another G-PAC member here in the audience that has felt very passionately about creating the services that serve the neighborhood, to get people out of their cars, walking to their local coffee and everything. So, those are points that, whatever use we choose, are aspects that we have discussed pretty thoroughly and want to make sure that, like you said, this isn't just a plan for housing. This is a more robust plan on a community. So, I liked your comments a lot. They're very accurate on how the domino effect can happen with decisions. So, I hope you'll pay attention and come back, because I think as we get into those particular aspects, I think you'll have a lot to add to that. Thank you.
Any other questions for the speaker? Seeing none, is there anyone else? Oh, Mr. Barnett had a question. Commissioner Barnett had a question for you. I apologize.
In your last comment in your presentation, you mentioned common interest developments or similar multifamily housing that is included in the missing middle presentation. Did you have a concept about the size of those types of residential improvements?
Well, there are some interesting, my mom retired to Texas instead of Los Gatos with my brother after we looked at senior living facilities in Los Gatos, just to be clear. So, there's an area in Texas called the Woodlands, which was a planned community. And so, they've made it so that people with small children and 80-year-old and little ladies could walk to the grocery and the park and the library to, along beautiful corridors. But in addition, they have these home areas with, you know, beautiful kind of Monty Sereno homes, but sort of like Baltimore, where it's a bunch of townhouses. When I lived in Maryland, there were so many more, it's kind of like what you think of a brownstone in New York, right? A series of townhouses so that, like, the property at 15975 Union could have had five townhouses and still had smaller bulk than what they've done, and some green space around it. So, it's that use of other neighborhoods that have appeal planning, appealing planning, I think, as a benchmark outside of Los Gatos to kind of compare what it could be. Anyway, but I think the use of townhouses is much more clever sometimes than even duplexes and triplexes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so the next speaker? If there's anyone else that plans to speak on that item, if you could bring your cards up to staff now, that would be helpful.
Good evening. My name is Emerald Hathaway, and I own 208 Car Luster Drive in Los Gatos. I've been here for over 50 years, and I have watched many, many changes in this beautiful town. One of the reasons why so many people want to come here is because of the ambiance, the beauty, the safety, and the beautiful schools that we have that are top-rated in the nation. The friendliness. In all the years that I've lived here, it doesn't matter who you are, or what you do, or your walk in life, your business, whatever you're doing, people love you here. It's a beautiful town. And I really feel badly when I read that we're going to try and change the town into four-story buildings all along Los Gatos Boulevard. It doesn't make any sense. It should be easy to add 2,000 homes or dwellings without putting in four-story buildings. Our town is not designed for it, it never was, and people want to come and live here, and we're willing, I have watched the prices on these, on our homes go up and up and up. The reason why is because of the desirability of wanting to live in this kind of a town, which is rare. If you look at the national average, Los Gatos is one of the safest places to live in the nation, and it's because we have worked hard to have a good police force, to have correct kinds of housing that work well for everyone. We want to have a multi-use, multi-ethnic diversity in our community, of course. That's what we, that's what our nation is built on. But we don't want to destroy our town while we're trying to be so diverse. We don't need to have that many stories. Now, in the downtown area, when everyone was talking, I was thinking about how we have beautiful buildings downtown that are at least three stories. But on the Boulevard, no. You might want to, we don't want to turn into Campbell or downtown San Jose. So, I just ask you to please consider the height and the amount of traffic that would cause, and the change in the beauty of the town. It just wouldn't look the same.
So, do you have any questions? Thank you very much for your comments. Do any Commissioners have questions for the speaker? Again, thank you very much for your comments. It's very much, it's very helpful. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Okay. Yes.
Hi, I'm Mark Reims. I live at 15561 Corrin Drive, which is over near Tularke. My question is, I saw in the, I read some of this before I came here, and there was an assumption made on how much, how additional, how many additional cars would be added, based on, they thought that most, more folks would start using public transportation. And I'd like to know what the factors they used to come up with this assumption on that that most people would start using public transportation, or?
When we have comments from the public, we're not able to answer your questions in a discussion format. So, you can pose your questions, and then perhaps, you know, staff could follow up with you later, or, and when we're having our discussion, we might be able to answer your question indirectly.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Did you have anything else you wanted to say?
No, just wondering how they, whether they assume most people would start using public transportation.
Thank you. It was, it's a good question. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this topic? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion of the hearing, and we will ask if Commissioners have questions of staff, wish to comment on the item, or introduce a motion for consideration by the Commission. Before we do that, I did want to suggest to my fellow Commissioners that, and this is a process that was similar that the G-PAC took, and this was probably the biggest point of discussion when we made the recommendation, it was, you know, people were concerned, am I agreeing to have, have, you know, 12 dwelling units per acre in low-density residential? Am I agreeing to four-story buildings anywhere that there's an opportunity area? And so, we gave the direction to the G-PAC, and I'm giving you all the same direction. And I think, as our consultants mentioned, the policy part of this is going to happen later. It's a general framework, and so any vote to support Alternative C doesn't imply that we're going to allow four-story buildings anywhere in town. And so, but, but the other side of this is that also that, to get to a certain number, they have to put in more density somewhere or more height somewhere. So, if we take one thing away, it will have to come from somewhere else. So, that being the case, we'll go into questions. I'm hoping that what we can do as a Commission is make a vote on the preferred land use alternative framework, be it C or something else, if that's the will of the Commission. And then, we can also vote to provide additional recommendations to the Council on things that we need to be wary of. For instance, we have to be really careful about four stories and where we would put it and how we would allow it, and so on and forth. So, that being the case, I want to put it to the Commission to ask any questions, make any comments, or if you feel that you're ready to make a motion, which probably not. Commissioner Badami?
I was hoping we'd get more public testimony with the amount of people in the audience. That being said, I see a member in the audience that was part of the G-PAC. So, my question is, two of those members, one being here in the audience and one not, unless I don't recognize that person, they have unless I don't recognize that person, they opposed alternative C. So if I could get some feedback possibly as to why they opposed alternative C, and which alternative did they prefer?
You want to take that one, Steph?
Well, I will start off with—I can barely read my own mind. So I think, obviously, there's concerns, and this type of process is always difficult because, as Commissioner Huedes mentioned before, it's, you know, kind of what comes first, and maybe you're comfortable with some portions of the alternative, but not all of them, and since that's how the motion was framed, you're not comfortable supporting it. I don't remember if Jennifer or the consultant remember anything specific from Mr. Rosenberg or Ms. Cantona as far as what their concerns were. There were an awful lot of questions, and I'll let Ms. Armour provide any additional information.
In—in thinking back to the meeting where the preferred alternative recommendation was made by the G-PAC, the—the concerns that kind of came to the forefront, there were some concerns about additional density within the low-density residential areas. There were also—excuse me—concerns about exactly how this would then be implemented as has been discussed this evening, and kind of what this framework meant in terms of how much flexibility there might be in the future.
The reason why I ask is, you know, we—we have limited information, so unless we were actually on this committee, the rest of us, we don't have any minutes to read from, so unless we were part of the committee or present during the hearing, I just wanted to know what some of the thought process was, especially from the public.
I can comment, and we had two dissenting votes on the recommendation, and one of them was Ms. Cantona, who's here in the audience, and the other one is—was Mr. Rosenberg. And I personally spoke to Mr. Rosenberg after the meeting, and he stated his concern during the meeting. It was actually the opposite of what some of the public comments were, it was more about the—as Ms. Armour said—the—the having any of the growth happen in low-density residential. And I—it's—I think it's simply because it's—it's hard to visualize. So he had this—had this idea that—that, you know, in any typical, you know, single-family neighborhood, there might be, you know, twelve houses in an—or, you know, or sixteen or twenty houses in an acre. And the—the reality of this thing is that—that it—you can only—if you say twelve dwelling units per acre and you have an eight thousand square foot lot, you may only be able to have one house on that lot. So that's one thing. And—and so he was actually preferring to have the—the density go into, say, mixed use, and this is a discussion that many of the G-PAC members is, that mixed use was a great way to go because we would have neighborhoods serving commercial, and then we would have some housing above. But there's still the concern about transition into the neighborhoods that are nearby. So I'm going to go back to what was said earlier, is that—that while we're agreeing to a generalized framework, we are not agreeing to any specific changes into the general plan use designations at this time. And in addition, we—there's another process that will take place even after the general plan is done. One element that is not done with the current general plan update is the housing element. And in the housing element is where we get more into the zoning implications of what we're doing. So when we're doing the general plan update, it's going to be followed by the housing element, which, when we start the housing element, we will actually have our regional housing needs allocation from the state to help plan more specifically for that. So I—I hear that people are alarmed about this, but again, it's sort of like the—the process is that you aren't going to have all the pieces of information that we need to go forward, so we have to kind of put a stake in the ground. And—and there's no decisions being made on exactly how alternative C would be implemented at this point. Commissioner Badami.
Okay, thank you for that. Going forward, would it be possible for us to get minutes of the G-PAC meetings?
We can give you G-PAC minutes, they're just action minutes, so they are not verbatim minutes. So I'm not sure they'd be much more helpful. I know we have at least one commissioner, if not more, that raised those concerns. That hasn't been modified, but they're not typical minutes like verbatim minutes that would give you the whole story.
Thank you.
Commissioner Huedes.
To follow up on a comment from the public or a question from the public, the heights that are indicated in alternative C, will bonuses increase the height over the maximums that are listed in the alternatives now?
If someone proposes a bonus, then yes, they could request that, as they can currently. I think the speaker, you know, is completely accurate, and I know the commission's well aware of—we've had a number—we've had at least two projects that have used those types of exceptions in the past. The state continues to take away local control and provide more opportunities for developers. I don't see that slowing down anytime soon, so that will continue to be an option. I think the challenge is, once we get to our housing element preparation, we're not going to be able to put a comment in there that says, "We're only going to plan for this many units because we're going to plan that everyone's going to do an exception," or "This many people are going to do an exception." What we're really ultimately going to do when we get down into the nuts and bolts of, you know, there's really, you know, the areas, the density, and the height.
So what are the numbers currently? What's the maximum, and what's the maximum with a bonus? And under alternative C, what is the maximum, what would the maximum be with a bonus?
So I don't know that there is technically a maximum, but ultimately, that's going to be a developer's decision, and generally, they don't go very much higher. I think the North Forty was in the fifteen-to-twenty-foot range. Obviously, you hear a lot of conversations about developments near transit, being able to go up to four to five stories automatically, and if you do X, Y, and Z, you can go another story. We're not going to be able to accommodate or plan for that. What we really need to do is ultimately, once we get through this discussion, the G-PAC goes through the land use element, the draft plan comes through with some proposed densities or—and heights, that's going to be the time we can have those conversations. I know the general concern was specifically with the low-density residential, so your R1Ds, your R1Eights, those—those properties, the numbers in and of themselves are scary. It's not that this alternative C is going to say you can have fifty feet in an R18, it's not. Ultimately, you can have a density—I think the low-density residential proposed now in C is up to sixteen units per acre. So if you have an eight-thousand-square-foot lot with a sixteen-unit max per acre, you can only have two units. Now again, there's a lot of other caveats to that because we're not talking about ADUs, and—and those have their own implications. But ultimately, regardless of the density, you know, we can still control the urban form as Chair Hanson was speaking about through the zoning regulations. I mean, there's technically a scenario where we change the density for these designations, but we don't change any of our zoning regulations. Now, some may think that's too restrictive, but ultimately, that will maintain the urban form of at least those single-family neighborhoods, but you potentially will have more units in those areas.
So if I may, that—that raises a question for the town attorney. Is it—is it possible to—to essentially describe and select an alternative that is inconsistent with the zoning—the town, or does the zoning have to change to meet the—what's in the general plan and what's in the housing element?
Ultimately, when the general plan gets adopted, then there will be necessary modifications to the zoning code that will have to take place. Those will be implementation measures that will be done following the general plan.
That's what I recall, and when we did the North Forty-specific plan, a number of changes were made because we couldn't be in a situation where the zoning didn't permit what was permitted in the plan. So that—I was a little confused by your comment that the urban form might not allow what's actually described in the—in the general plan.
Well, maybe you misunderstood me. It would still allow it, but you don't have to change setbacks, height, you know, coverage, those types of things. You can still accommodate an increased density in those same parameters. You basically have what would otherwise look like a single-family house that has two or three or four units, which is that missing—missing-middle housing document that you have. So there's—there's ways to—to try to maintain some of that. But again, some folks may say, "Well, if we're going to allow increased density, maybe we should allow, as we do currently with the ADUs, you know, a ten percent increase in FAR because we're getting increased units." But ultimately, whatever gets adopted in the general plan, if there's anything inconsistent in the zoning regulations, they will have to be modified.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Yanoff.
Thank you. I—I wanted to step back a little bit because we're—we're—the comments from the public and the questions from commissioners not on the G-PAC all speak to a concern about how what we're talking about recommending to council fundamentally changes the town. What we are essentially doing is enabling the consultant with a—by giving them a framework of density and height, specifically targeting areas of town where it may be reasonable to have higher density, higher height, in order for us to carefully analyze how the town can get from the number of units it has today to responding to the increase in units over time we anticipate the state will—will bring down to the town. So we're not—we're not saying we're going to build—well, the town can't build, the town enables builders and developers to build. So the town isn't building, the town is saying, "If we have these requirements from the state and we have to accommodate a number of units, how can the town absorb that increase without fundamentally changing the look and character that we all cherish?" So we understood that if we didn't give the consultants a little bit larger number than we might feel comfortable with, knowing that you may—you may plan for two thousand units, but you may only wind up seeing eight hundred built. Usually, you're—you're—at least from discussions with the staff, we're seeing an underperformance against our targets. So the fact that we are shooting for a goal of two thousand, we could expect something less typically in—in terms of actual build. This gives us—the—this gives the town the ultimate ability to carefully analyze where those increases might occur. It doesn't say they will occur, and they don't—they don't say specifically how high or how not high, how not. It just gives the consultants the framework to talk to us about, can we get close to those targets we think are going to be mandated, and if so, how? That's all—they—that's all this framework does. It doesn't say it's going to happen. It just gives us the—the—the details, the data, to be able to make an informed decision for the town. If we adopt a framework that's less aggressive on the number of units, we're going to fall short of whatever the state is mandating, and then we may see other problems in terms of developers coming in and asking for exemptions because the state is allowing it, and we haven't provided that. So we're trying to—we're trying to do just what I said, trying to accommodate what we think the growth requirements are going to be, but also do it in a—in a reflective, thoughtful, careful way that is respectful of the town and—and what we want to see happen in it. We—we—we recommended alternative C, generally understanding that that was sort of the outer limits of the framework. What we don't know is whether the consultants will come back and say, "You know, that framework gives you the opportunity to create six thousand units," in which case we might say, "Well then, let's lower the height and—and change some of the areas of opportunities. We just don't know what's possible yet, and we're looking forward to the consultant's input so that we can make informed decisions going forward." So that—that's the—kind of the—the overarching reason why we recommended alternative C.
Commissioner Huedes.
That's—thank you, that's very helpful. And I really appreciate the—the work and the—the involvement of of my fellow commissioners and of everyone who's on the G-PAC, because it's not possible to dive in and understand that in the snapshot that we're in now. So I have a lot of respect for the recommendations that—that—and the direction that's coming from—from fellow commissioners. I had a question for the consultant, though, on—who's probably more up to speed on the housing numbers that are going to be coming down from the state. And—and really, the question is, does alternative B meet the state-mandated housing requirements over the next twenty years?
Well, the—we were looking at doing the—the two thousand as the basis for that, and that was based off past performance, that doesn't even account for what the state might do to you. Now, we've heard any—what has happened in the state has been all over the board, and some areas have actually doubled or tripled in arena numbers, some areas have only had a small percentage increase. We were looking at just keeping yours fairly similar to what has happened in the past with future adjustments might, as needed by HCD's cha—I'm sorry, Housing and Community Development on the state's side. So it was felt that this two thousand number would get you through to this twenty-year period. If your arena does expand significantly, you have time to make readjustments as we go forward in the planning cycle because your—while your general plan is supposed to have a twenty-year vision, it's also supposed to be adjusted, and many of our plans actually relook at themselves every five years to see if there's any notable changes.
But my question was about alternative B?
It—it falls just right around that two thousand number. As far as the totals that would be allowed, it's nineteen sixteen, as far as its number. So it's—it's in the ballpark. I think what had been explained is the G-PAC wanted to make sure we had a little wiggle room. For instance, some of the public mentioned, "Well, what if we go down a floor?" Or "What if we don't let the downtown go as big?" So as we make those changes, if we have no wiggle room to start with, we've already underperformed, we don't have the ability to make those changes.
Thank you.
I just wanted to go ahead and then, Commissioner Badami. I think there's something really important that wasn't said at this point either, that the G-PAC discussed at great length. When we started talking about—when we started talking about the land use needs of our town, certainly the state requirements are part of it, we have to address that. But probably more important than that is—if—if we have to grow, we want to grow in a way that benefits our residents and our future residents. And—and every member of the G-PAC felt it was really important that we address the housing needs of moving down seniors as well as our young millennials that are unable to buy into town right now because of the cost of—of single-family housing. So I—I think every—while we don't have the policies in place to make this happen, I—I think all of us that—are thinking that if we're going to add two thousand units, we're not going to be adding two thousand thirty-five-hundred-square-foot houses. We're going to be adding, you know, smaller townhouses, you know, maybe taking a single-family home and it becomes a duplex or a threeplex. But if we're going to have mixed use, what we really would like to see is that the—those units are going to be five hundred to a thousand square feet on top of retail, and it's something that, you know, a twenty-five-year-old that could afford to live in, or there'll be places that would be appropriate for moved-down seniors that want to move out of those thirty-five-hundred-square-foot homes. So again, it—it kind of gets down to the—the policies that make this happen. All—where we are right now is really just talking about an overall number, and then we have to go through that process and figure out how we can do it to preserve what makes our town great, as well as take care of the people that are in our town right now. And I don't know if people in the audience are aware, but we've—we've heard this when we did the housing element the last time, and—and we've continued to hear it through the process, but something like thirty-five or forty percent of our residents are going to be over the age of sixty-five at—in this decade. So—so again, it—it—I—I think it's really important to think in terms of growth that we're not looking at adding the same kind of growth that we've had in the past, we're looking at much, much smaller units, and then we would need to figure out, how can we make that happen? Commissioner Badami had a question or comment?
My question was quick, and actually, it's a continuation of questions for the consultant pertaining to Commissioner Huedes's question. So that was back to alternative B versus C. So B still meets the criteria for the number of housing units, but the primary difference, the major difference between B and C would be the difference in allowable height and number of stories. Is that correct?
Alternative B only produces nineteen hundred and sixteen units. The four hundred and seventy-five, if you're looking at that— The 475, if you're looking at that 2391 number, those are existing approved and pending projects. So they do not count towards the state's requirements for housing because they'll be, it's expected they'll be built or permitted prior to your next housing cycle.
But what about the ADU units that add to that? 500?
Yeah, that was in the 1916.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Hudes.
Question about the ADU units. Does that assume the change that we will be looking at tonight on adding junior ADU units to the inventory? Because it's a, and you've got that as a constant across all the alternatives, correct?
He was looking at, yes, it does, the short answer. We looked at 20 units per year as a regular detached ADU and we looked at five units per year as a junior ADU over the 20-year period. That's which gives you the 500.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions or comments? Commissioner Birch.
Would it be appropriate then to direct towards the consultant the question concerning the vehicle trips? It is one of the items that gets looked at with the different alternatives. Or would that be something that would maybe be more appropriate once an alternative is selected? I'm asking the chair that.
I think he can ask your question.
Okay. So you've heard the audience, so I don't need to repeat their question. In our G-PAC packet, page 29, you go through the vehicle trip estimates per alternative. And I know there were some assumptions made with public transit. So I was wondering if, I can't really have dialogue with the audience, but maybe you could assist in answering that question.
In the phrasing of it, at times it was said most would go transit. That's certainly not the case. The traffic estimates were done using the ITE estimations for household sizes. That's the standard used across the United States for generation as far as what would happen at different kinds of land uses. Now, in the conversation, there's certainly discussion about the fact that if you have a more walkable area, like your downtown, your downtown has mixed-use components. It's not as much residential as you might see in other places in the future, but it's a mixed-use area. You have a lot of people on foot. You obviously have tourist traffic that parks there. But the idea is that the people could live in that area, walk around to shops and neighborhood shopping, and they would have lesser need for automobiles. Long-term, how much parking is required is going to be something that will change in the community. There's not a requirement for four. I think that was mentioned at one point and that wouldn't be the case in the future. Most communities are actually looking to go down towards one parking per unit, especially on smaller units because the occupancies are typically single individuals in a lot of cases. Or they don't have a car, so it balances out to that one. And so a lot of places are finding that to be a sweet spot, spot moving forward. So parking numbers actually would go down in the future. We do expect some transit to be enhanced over this 20-year period. It's not going to happen next year after we approve this, but it will happen over the long term. And as we have some enhancements to density, you'll be able to better support transit. But we did consider the automobile still as being a dominant player in the environment.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hudes.
I have some questions about the exhibit, the chart on page, let's see, 70, I think. It's the first large table. And so I had some questions. I'm trying to understand how the, the numbers were developed. So the first, it talks about population first and then it says total net new population and then total population and then total projected 2040 population. What does total population mean? That's a, that's a tenth of the size of the town, so.
Total net new goes along with those net units we've talked about before. The total population is taking that net new and adding to it the population that would come with the 475 pending and approved projects to give you a total.
Okay. The other question I had on that is the descriptions on the traffic congestion increase levels. So we are just beginning to use VMT and those kinds of numbers. There's a description here that says minimal, minimal, moderate, and moderate. How confident are you that that's what residents are going to experience with this alternative? That it will be a, what they would characterize as a moderate traffic increase or congestion increase?
The traffic engineers ran this based on a preliminary model. Now, there's a difference in the traffic engineering for what will be done now versus what will be done for the environmental impact report. These were meant to be comparative analysis. As we go forward with this, we will do full traffic analysis to find out the actual impacts. Now, the VMT numbers, the big one to look at there is the VMT per capita. Because you'll see at the higher alternatives, the VMT per capita decreases. And that's one of the key indicators that you're better performing transportation system. You're traveling less per person overall. And some of that, again, is that enhanced walkability long-term. But it is not a full-scale traffic model at this point. Again, going back to that is a significant undertaking and not something you do for each alternative.
So, but my concern is about standing behind the terminology moderate or minimal that's in the report. I understand the differences and I believe I understand the numbers. But I don't believe that we have the experience to know whether that's the way people will perceive it. And I am concerned about approving a general plan that causes unacceptable traffic and then somebody pointing to this report that says it's, well, it was only going to be moderate.
Well, when you actually make an approval of a plan, you'll have a detailed traffic analysis that you can point to and, and know exactly numerically what that means. Now, this was done by Fairampire's, which is the leader in transportation analysis in the state of California. And they've done traffic analysis all over the state. And so they're characterizing this based on their experience in looking to the future. Now, traffic, I've worked in more than 200 communities. I could probably say 199 of them said traffic was their biggest thing. And just finished a plan in South Dakota. And their idea of bad traffic was because they had to sit behind a pickup at the light. So people's perceptions of that, it's, you obviously have a lot of traffic in town. You have issues with your school system putting out on the streets and what happens to the street during that half-hour pickup time. You've got issues with cut-through traffic on weekends and other problems with overloading the highways. So it's not that you don't have problems and not that they won't make it. More people will add more cars. We likely do not have the ability to enhance your transportation system significantly in town. Everything's, we're not adding lanes, in other words. So we will get more people into biking circumstances, some more people into walking, some more on transit. But you're still going to have increases in overall traffic on your roadway systems. And people's perceptions of any increase in traffic will likely be not happy. But they're all part of a trade-off that you need to make if you're going to meet housing requirements.
I'm just reacting to approving a report that says things are going to be minimal or moderate when we have no experience with VMT and reality in town. And even less experience with these alternatives and how that translates through to people's actual experience. So I'm more reacting to that.
Commissioner, or Vice Chair Janoff.
Thank you. You know, in response to Commissioner Hudes's concerns about traffic, there isn't a person in this room, there isn't a person in town, there isn't a person on G-PAC who didn't start the conversation with, but what about traffic? I guess that's not starting the conversation. But we didn't, we didn't view thinking of traffic as our highest priority, although maybe it is the higher priority for a lot of us today. The G-PAC felt it was not, that, that in itself couldn't be the reason to not call for an increased number of residential units. Don't like the traffic situation we have. There need to be some changes that we, there are, we hope that there are changes in the works. We know that an increase in, in the number of units will likely exacerbate the problem. But we didn't, we didn't feel it was our purview to say, sorry, we can't go higher units because it's going to make traffic worse. So I, I, I hope that reflects what, what the G-PAC members were, were thinking and discussing. But I, I just want to emphasize that traffic is a concern and we all realize that. And these, these particular areas of opportunity are going to, going to have a negative impact potentially. But that's, that's an outcome of the increase in units. And again, what we are asking the planning commission for today is, is a recommendation that the alternative that the G-PAC is recommending be recommended to town council so that there can be approval for the full analysis upon which we'll have much more information to determine what the traffic impact might be and how many units, where, density, where, height, where. So we just, I, I think it's important to get all of these concerns out. And, and I would hope that tonight, with whatever recommendation the planning commission puts forward to town council, whether, whether it forwards the recommendation of G-PAC, that if you have concerns about the, the recommendation of alternative C, we also provide a list of those bullets so that the council can see. And they'll hear the concerns, of course, if they listen to these transcripts. But they can see, yeah, perhaps alternative C is the one to have a full, more complete analysis of. But we're concerned about these things. And, and that can still be part of the, the recommendation going forward, so.
I would also add that we're not approving anything. We're only making a recommendation to council. And, and if the council goes forward with this recommendation, as Vice Chair Janoff stated, that will initiate a process of more thorough analysis of the preferred land use alternative. And, and there will be a, a full environmental impact report done on our general plan update. And that has to include transportation and all kinds of issues. So, you know, I, I think it's, we had this, some of this same discussion when we had the G-PAC meeting a few weeks ago about what are we approving? We're not approving the general plan yet. We're approving a framework to move forward for, and doing more analysis in, on the land use element so that we can come up with the right policies that would go with it.
All right, Commissioner Hudes.
I had a few questions. I crunched some numbers and sometimes I get more comfortable when I see numbers. So I wanted to just maybe make a statement and then ask a question about it. So first, I looked at the different alternatives in terms of population increase. And it looked to me, and then I compared it to the historical population that was in the previous, information that was provided in the previous general plan. And it looked to me like from sort of modern times, 2008 to 2020, overall, there's been an annual population growth of 1.4% in town, given the numbers in, in your chart and in here. And that what is being suggested to accommodate for in, in option or alternative C is 0.9% increase. So I, and, and I did see that the, these percentages varied as I went back to 1963 and I looked at each, each year. So I'm not uncomfortable with planning for a population increase of 0.9% in alternative C, given that we've experienced a 1.4% increase in sort of recent history. So I don't, I don't find that C is out of line. Could you tell me if I'm right on, on my general understanding of the population increases?
Yeah, that's, that's about right. And I, our numbers originally started also with looking at what the California Department of Finance projects using historic trends going into the future, as well as what our economics professional looked at. And they were also in the sub-1% range.
Now, to, to the question that I had, I also looked at the number of new units per person added under the four different alternatives. And I included the ones that had been approved and the, all of them, basically. Just, I think the population lives in all those places, so. And then I also turned it around and looked at the average number of people per unit added. And I was interested that between alternative A, we started at 1.7 per unit. And when we got to alternative D, we were at 2.09 per person. Why would that be? Maybe you could explain why there are more people per unit as we move up in the options?
I'm not sure the math offhand, but our factor we used was 2.4 persons per dwelling unit, which is what the town currently uses for projections.
Okay. Well, you may have been using a different number. You may have been excluding the in-process and the ADUs, maybe? But what I found interesting was that it changed from alternative to alternative. In your analysis, you kept it constant?
Yes.
Okay. So those are the questions I had on the numbers. Like I said, one of them gave me some sort of comfort that we're in the general ballpark with alternative C.
Commissioner Birch.
I'm curious if it might be appropriate for me to go ahead and venture a motion.
I was about to suggest that to the commission, that we should attempt a motion, see where we stand.
Just to ask one question of staff real quick on process. This has been billed as the land use alternatives, but we haven't talked about anything other than housing. Will we be talking about other land uses at the planning commission?
Ultimately, when the G-PAC discusses land uses, we probably will have some conversation. I'm sure you noticed throughout, the commercial was kept constant. There wasn't an increase shown. This really was to explore housing from a land use perspective. We will have to have some factors that go into the environmental impact report as far as what we think future growth in office, commercial, various commercial sectors will be over the next 20 years so that that can also be plugged into the environmental impact report.
Okay. Because I think, as I've pointed out before, I think we're ignoring some of the opportunities of being more oriented toward the innovation economy in town. And I think that that, as this discussion about the middle points out something that's missing, I think in the commercial and in the, in hotels as well as office space, that there's something missing there that's pretty fundamental and pretty important for the town. So I've, I've written up something. I can provide it to staff and to the, to the G-PAC on this topic. But I, I just feel like if we are going to do a motion and we're not going to address that, I want to have some comfort that there will be an opportunity to address something that I think is important and missing.
Absolutely. I think ultimately, that's been brought up again in G-PAC multiple times. So once we get the goals and policies, from the environmental impact report, it's really a square footage. And so then that, you know, equates to employee population and greenhouse gas and traffic. So it would be some kind of cap from a individual commercial standpoint. But those types of items, we definitely welcome, definitely send those to us. We will get those to the G-PAC and the consultant and make sure that those are addressed prior to the land use element coming back before planning commission.
Thank you.
And I'd like to add a comment to that. Way back in the process, when we talked about the focus of the G-PAC discussions, it was decided that, that we needed to focus most on the housing. But that doesn't mean that we can't, as we process through the land use element, that we can't add goals and policies for commercials as well. I don't think anybody on the G-PAC wants to add, you know, 2,300 housing units and then not have a more commercial to support the neighbors. And of course, you know, we want the people to have the jobs close to them. And so I'm sure that all that will be factored in later. It's just, it wasn't the focus of the land use alternatives report. So I just want to make it clear that by making this motion and recommendation to council, we're not saying we're excluding commercial.
So Commissioner Birch, if you are ready to make a question.
So yes, I, I am, I am comfortable making a motion that, based on the recommendation of the G-PAC, we will recommend approval, or I'm sorry, moving forward with the study for land use alternate C and the framework as included in Exhibit 11. I think I kind of butchered their recommendation. But I'm comfortable making that, although I, I've, I've heard all the discussion about the numbers because truly this is really just authorizing our consultant to start. just authorizing our consultant to start something. We have to give them a line in the sand somewhere on how to start with this. There will be many more discussions about what this looks like. Is it appropriate, you know, we've got Los Gatos Boulevard everywhere. Will it be in pocket areas? And then, as our chair mentioned, we will be having discussions about now what does this impact as far as our retail or local services? It's all one big package. We just, we need to move forward with this to get to that point. So I'm very comfortable doing that.
Do we have a second? Vice Chair Janoff.
I'll second the motion.
Would any commissioners like to add comments or questions before we take a vote? Commissioner Barnett?
We've discussed the fact that there's going to be further time for analysis and review and modification. I wonder if it would be overreaching to say it would be appropriate to footnote in the motion that we anticipate that there will be that kind of further input.
Yeah, I would be very comfortable with that.
As would I.
I think, I would also add that I think even subsequent to taking a vote on moving forward the framework, it's perfectly appropriate, since we're making a recommendation to Council, to take suggestions from commissioners as to things that should be considered when the Council considers this as well, you know, notes, so. But your motion is amended to include that as Commissioner Barnett's. Okay. And does the secondor agree?
Yes.
Okay. Now, is there anyone else that wants to make comments before we take a vote?
Commissioner Hades.
So this is, I've been wrestling with this for some time and, and better understanding the process and better understanding the involvement of the public and the members of the G-PAC allows me to get more comfortable with something I was not initially comfortable with. The, and, and, you know, relative to having more input, I believe that this really should be done after we have developed goals. To me, this is the cart before the horse. It's very difficult to select alternatives when you don't know what you're trying to achieve. And so I would just sort of reserve the right to come back and, you know, when, when this does come back, when there are goals, to really look and see, do these, does this alternative meet the goals with the risk that maybe we do another round, you know, at that point? So I will be supporting the motion, but I, and let me just give you some of the reasons for my discomfort that maybe we could think about as we start to develop this. One is that this is a longer timeframe than we've done before. Longer timeframe to me means we're dealing with more uncertainty. There's also more uncertainty in the environment that we're in today. We've just seen SB 50, you know, all over the place. We, we, and, and we have a lot of uncertainty in other aspects of land use and, and retail as well. So given the longer timeframe and the more uncertainty, I would tend to more conservative numbers rather than put down numbers that might allow more development than would be normal. I also didn't hear yet that Alternative C really is necessary to meet state requirements. And could we manage with a fewer, fewer number? And I'd be looking for that as the process, you know, goes on. As well, I felt that the, the, the middle is still missing. And the missing middle is missing. From Alternative C, it pushes us more toward the more dense and, and taller buildings when perhaps it could be achieved more if we worked harder at a smaller alternative with more, you know, focusing on that particular item. Because frankly, to me, I read the very interesting article on the missing middle, but then I didn't see the missing middle that much in the actual proposals that were developed. But like I said, I will be supporting the motion because I think we need to move this forward and it is an iterative process and this will give us the opportunity to do that.
Commissioner Badami.
I'll also be supporting the motion, but I just wanted to add the comment that I work in the downtown area. So adding that as an eighth opportunity area, I think was great and I fully support that. I experience it downtown. I think it will, the more mixed use that we can have adds to the vibrancy and the walkability. So I'll be supporting the motion as well.
Commissioner Tivana.
I would like to add that I'll be, excuse me, supporting the, the motion as well. However, you know, I did notice that the G-PAC preferred alternative is the only one that includes the, the downtown district for the, I'm sorry, opportunity area. So I would wonder if we could add that to the other alternative to see what the total number would be, if we can include that in future studies as well.
Any other comments? Commissioner Hades.
One minor thing is I would recommend taking out words that characterize traffic as minimal or moderate before forwarding this recommendation. I just think, think it's a great idea to do that.
Question for staff. Will you be taking the comments of the commissioners and adding that to the recommendation? Or do we need to, to do that post the vote?
The, the Town Council will have verbatim minutes from this meeting, as well as we will provide a summary of what staff has heard in the staff report to Town Council.
Okay. That being the case, I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed? No abstentions? It passes unanimously. All right, thank you. And with that, we will move on to the next item on the agenda. Oh, I forgot to ask, are there any appeal rights for this motion? Because it's a recommendation to Council.
That's correct.
And because we've been meeting on this item for a long time, we're going to take a five-minute break.
We're going to resume the Planning Commission meeting. And I, before we move on to the next item, I did want to, to correct an omission I made. I wanted to recognize that Commissioner Barnett has also served for quite some time on the General Plan Committee as well as the G-PAC. But unfortunately, when he became a Planning Commissioner, we can only have three representatives on the, so he's graciously agreed to serve on another committee, which we'll hear more about later. But I wanted to thank Commissioner Barnett for all of his efforts participating so far in the G-PAC. So we will be moving on to item three, which is the Town Code Amendment, Application A-20-002. Project location is townwide. The applicant is the town of Los Gatos. And the, we're asked to forward a recommendation to Town Council for approval of the amendments to Chapter 29, the zoning regulations of the Town Code regarding family daycare home regulations. And we have a new staff member, Mr. Mora, and I understand you'll be giving the staff report this season.
Yes, and I'd just like to introduce Mr. Mora. He comes to us from the city of San Jose, has a degree from Santa Clara University and is currently completing his master's in urban and regional planning with the, with San Jose State University. He's been with us about six months and we're delighted to have him.
Great. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Before you tonight, our consideration of amendments to Chapter 29 of the Town Code regarding family daycare home regulations. In September of 2019, Governor Newsom signed Senate Bill 234, Exhibit 3, amending sections 1596.72 through 1597.543 of the Health and Safety Code regarding large family daycare homes. The code amendments are related to definition of family daycare home, including small and large daycare home, and family daycare home as a residential use by right where residential uses are permitted. Based on the evidence and discussion provided in the staff report, staff recommends that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the Town Council. The commission should also include any comments or recommended changes to the draft ordinance in Exhibit 2. This concludes staff's presentation and we are happy to answer any questions you have.
Would any commissioners like to ask questions? Commissioner Birch.
Just so I'm clear, we are essentially updating our ordinance to match this current state requirements, correct?
That is correct.
Thanks.
Commissioner Hades.
So in the attachment, there's a, a text from the state that's today's law as amended, And that seems to cover a lot of the definitions that we have in our, in our proposed code. Maybe you could correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like we didn't use that verbatim. Is there a reason why we didn't just adopt that language from the state for definitions and things like that? Or maybe I missed it, maybe we did. I don't know.
No, I'll take a stab at that. I think that we work with the ordinance as it stands for the most part and try and amend that, make sort of surgical amendments to that as much as possible, rather than rewriting a definition where we already have one. So we just adjusted it to cover the, a number of children in the large family daycare.
Okay. I mean, that, I think that's obviously going to be within the purview of the staff on how they want to handle that. I just was surprised that we didn't just cut and paste from the state, so.
Yeah, there was also, the state was a little bit ambiguous as to the numbers between the small and the large family daycare. So that said also, probably made it a little bit more challenging to do that. So it seemed clear to work with the ordinance as it stands.
I just wanted to ask a clarifying question. So as I understand, now, whereas in the past, we would have them apply for a business license if they wanted to have a family daycare, now they won't be able to do that anymore because the state wants to really streamline things and really promote the family daycare. And that also, so that was one question. Is that correct?
That is correct. It will be considered permitted use by right where residential uses are permitted.
Okay. And, and that basically this is a necessary step that we need to take because, to be in compliance with the state law? And there aren't any options for us to make any deviations from it?
That is correct, unless you want to change something in the draft ordinance to make comment. comments or verbiage to it. But in essence, this is to conform to state law.
Thank you. Do other commissioners have questions? And then, if that's not the case, then we will open up the hearing to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? If so, then please fill out a speaker card and step up to the podium. It doesn't look like we have any speaker, any comments from the public. Okay, that being the case, I will close the public portion of the hearing and ask if any commissioners have additional questions from staff, want to make comments, or will introduce a motion for consideration. And I would remind us that our objective is to make a recommendation to the town council, who will also consider this, following our recommendation. Commissioner Birch?
I'll make a motion. All right. I will move that we forward a recommendation to the town council to approve the amendments to Chapter 29 of the town code regarding family daycare home regulations. I can make the required findings for SEQA and the required findings for the general plan.
Second, Commissioner Padami.
So moved.
All right. Are there any additional comments or questions before we take a vote? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? No, since it passes unanimously. Thank you. Ms. Zarnowitz, just to clarify, there are no appeal rights because we're making a recommendation to town council.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So now we will move on to agenda item four, which is town code amendment, application Project location, townwide. Project applicant is the town of Los Gatos. We are asked to forward a recommendation to the town council for approval of the amendments to Chapter 29 zoning regulations of the town code, this time regarding accessory dwelling units. And Ms. Zarnowitz, I understand you'll be giving the staff report this evening.
Yes, thank you. Also, in October, or in 2019, new law was passed regarding accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. And the laws pertained in particular to the sizes, locations, the number of ADUs allowed, and the parking. So, before you tonight is a draft ordinance, which addresses those changes and amends the zoning regulations to address those changes. And also, in the discussion, there are options for less restrictive regulations, should the commission recommend those to the town council. Jurisdictions have the right to be less restrictive than the state would even require. And so, there are several of those options in the staff report pertaining primarily to locations and setbacks. So, that concludes staff reports, and we are here to answer questions.
Do any commissioners have questions as staff? Commissioner Padami?
Do we have any regulations to prevent ADUs from being used as an Airbnb?
Yes, the Airbnb or the short-term rental ordinance that went through recently prohibited new ADUs from being used as short-term rental.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right. Seeing none, then I will invite comments from members of the public. Is there anyone that would wish to make comments on this item? It appears not. So then, I will close -- oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. So please step to the podium and state your name and address, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Kretschmer, AIA. I live at 101 Old Bossum Hill Road. I'm a resident and a business owner. I am also the vice president of the AIA Silicon Valley chapter and on the board of directors for the AIA California, although I'm here to speak primarily on behalf as a resident and business owner in Los Gatos. The main item that I would like to address is the decision to not allow accessory dwelling units in front of primary residences, primarily because the state does require cities or towns to allow existing buildings to be converted into ADUs. We have a situation in this town where we do have a lot of older homes that are small enough to be considered an ADU. And rather than seeing those smaller homes demolished in order to build a larger home, and then they still put an ADU in the back, I would like to propose that the council here considers existing infrastructure to be allowed to be a detached ADU in front of a primary residence. The other thing that I'd also like you to consider is that the current amendments are allowing for setbacks of four feet. That is quite adequate, but we could go so far as three feet and still comply to building codes and still have space to go around the structure, and therefore leave more open space in the yards of properties if the detached ADU is pushed all the way towards the back of the property. It still allows for preventative fire measures, so that is one other consideration that I'd like you to think about. And that's it.
Do any commissioners have questions for the speaker? Commissioner Hudes?
I had two questions with regard to the setback. Would changing the setback in any way allow certain ADUs to be larger than they otherwise would be?
No, it should not, as long as the, as long as the town is complying to the state regulations as far as size.
But there's a difference between the distance in some small lots, correct? Where by having more setback, the structure would be further away and potentially could be larger because of the distance from the main structure?
I think you could end up making it larger one way or another, depending on the space that's allocated. There are distances that are required from the existing primary structure, so you can't build them, even for fire code, right up next to each other. So that also limits how large an ADU can be.
Okay. I had another question, which, if I may?
For the speaker?
Yeah.
Sure.
The first point that you made about putting an ADU in front of a primary dwelling, does that apply to historic as well?
I think that that's actually one of the best ways to utilize that. We have a few structures where I know people are considering adding almost what I would call a Frankenhouse, in order to keep the existing character of the original small historic home, they're adding a giant addition onto the back. If they would have the option of keeping that smaller historic home still in the front area, and have, and if they have, of course, enough lot size and enough FAR to build the main structure behind, then the existing neighborhood character of the street could remain without that existing historic structure being demolished or being altered in such a way.
So, are you referring specifically to the language that says an option, a standard has been included in the draft order and ordinance clarifying that no accessory dwelling unit may be constructed in front of a primary dwelling unit that is a historic resource? And are you suggesting that we should adopt that option?
Correct. I am specifically speaking to Section 2910-320B, number three.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Janoff?
Yeah, just a question about the setback. The option that I'm reading is not speaking to a detached accessory dwelling unit, but an attached accessory dwelling unit. And it's asking about whether, essentially to eliminate from the current, which is a five-foot setback, to allow a four-foot setback. So the question I have for you is, we currently require a five-foot distance between a primary residence and an accessory dwelling unit. So, if we use the term circulation, what's your thought about not having a five-foot circulation, which is generally the requirement for a detached? It's not a setback from the property line, but, yeah. So if you're suggesting this, and again, this is referring to attached, that's what the option, language before us. I understand your point about the detached. Would you also say that you would advocate either the four or even the three-foot setback if it's an attached accessory dwelling?
No, I think if it's attached, it needs to be attached, there shouldn't be any breezeway. I mean, if they want to design a breezeway, they could be a louted breezeway, but it should not be required.
I'm not talking about the breezeway, I'm saying, let's say it's right smack against the primary dwelling unit. What kind of setback are you advocating for that accessory dwelling unit on the property?
Got it. The setback that is for the new, the new writing in the code is acceptable, it's the five feet.
Five feet, right, thank you.
Any other questions for the speaker? Thank you very much for your comments, it was very helpful. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this item? Make sure I didn't miss anyone? Okay. Seeing none, then I will close the public portion of the hearing, and then ask if any of the commissioners would like to ask any additional questions of staff. Before we proceed forward with any motions or anything, I did want to make a comment that in the staff report, there's the request to forward a recommendation to council for adopting the changes that the state has designated. And then, as Ms. Zarnowitz mentioned, there are several options that we could also consider that would be more lenient than the state code if we want to facilitate the development of ADUs. What I'd like to do, in terms of process, is have the commission vote first on the recommendation to adopt the state law changes, and then consider each of the options separately. And we can have a, we don't need to reopen the public hearing for that, but we can discuss each one and then vote as to whether we'd like to go that direction or not in the recommendation. So that being the case, are there any additional questions for staff, comments that commissioners would like to make, or would anyone like to make a motion on the first item, which would be to adopt the state law changes? Commissioner Barnett?
I had a very small nitto pick on page six of the draft ordinance and page seven, and that is that item eight at the top of page six requires one parking unit per unit for an accessory dwelling unit, and then it's followed by seven, six exceptions. And I was proposing an additional exception to tie in or to make consistent paragraph 13D on page seven. So the import of this is that would harmonize the draft ordinance, section 2910-320B8 on page six, with section 2910-320B13D on page seven. In other words, that there would be no parking spaces required for accessory dwelling units.
So, you're suggesting to make a correction to the draft ordinance?
Correct.
Could staff?
Yes, we, I think the understanding was that that might relate to junior accessory dwelling units, was the consistency that the commissioner might be looking for. Section 13 is about the conversion of existing floor area. And so, the conversion does exist. Maybe it's number three under A, 8A3, the ADU is within the existing space of a primary dwelling or an existing structure, accessory structure? And did you want to add junior to that, a junior ADU?
Commissioner Barnett?
Yeah, that was the intent, and I did discuss it with Ms. Zarnowitz.
Okay. So you, so you would be comfortable if they made that change that you recommended with the language in the ordinance?
Yes, to harmonize those two sections.
Yes, and to clarify, we can go back to make sure those two sections match, which was, I believe, the commissioner's concern.
Other comments from commissioners? Would anyone like to make a motion to, for the draft ordinance, and then, keeping in mind that we'll discuss the different options that were presented in the staff report subsequent? Commissioner Padami?
I'll try a motion. I move to forward a recommendation to the town council for town code amendment, application A-20-001, amendments to Chapter 29 of the town code regarding accessory dwelling units, with the addition of the changes as recommended by Commissioner Barnett. I can make the required findings for SEQA, and I can make the required findings for the general plan per exhibit one.
Is there a second? Commissioner Hudes?
Second.
Would anyone else like to make comments on the motion before we take a vote? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. And are there appeal rights for the motion?
No, there are not, because it's a recommendation to town council.
Thank you. All right, so, having done that, I thought we ought to go through the different options that are in the staff report and make a recommendation as to which, whether we would wish to be, recommend to council to be more lenient than the language in the state law. So, the first option, and I might ask staff to give additional explanation, I mean, it's described here, but the first option is on page three, and it, as I understand it, it has to do with whether or not, there's a limit on, of two ADUs that can be had, but the state law says detached or additionally a junior ADU inside the house. And then, do we want to add an attached ADU as one of the possibilities? And so, if you could comment on that, if I got that right?
That's correct, and I have a sketch, if you want to see, an example of an attached or detached with the junior. So the junior ADU, as defined by the state, is within the primary residence.
I think we would like to see the drawing.
Okay. The junior ADU is within the residence, and we'll have an example of a junior ADU in the residence, and then a detached accessory dwelling unit, which is what the state requires. And then we also have an example of an attached, which the state does not require that jurisdictions allow it. So this is what the state would require to be allowed, and that's what the ordinance allows right now, a detached. And then that's the, the junior ADU is within the primary dwelling, plus 150 feet are allowed for egress. That's what the state is allowing, and then the question is, would the town want to allow the junior ADU on the bottom, and then the attached ADU, all in one structure? So that wouldn't increase the numbers, you still, one could still have one ADU and one junior ADU. It's just a question of whether or not you would allow that second ADU to be attached.
So, do any commissioners have questions or comments on that? Commissioner Birch first?
I definitely think we should support that. I think that that's going to be easier on a homeowner to provide, that's a much simpler modification or construction than a completely detached unit that has to be built. I don't see anything wrong with that.
Other comments? Vice Chair Janoff?
Yeah, I would agree with Commissioner Birch. We do want to increase the housing units, and so this is a good way to do it, and giving homeowners the flexibility to accommodate the nuances of their property makes good sense. Question for staff, is there also an option, if you go back to the first diagram, that the junior ADU could be associated with the ADU? Oh, why look?
There should be another one where there's a junior, there we go. That is the second question in this option, yes. Would you, would the town like to allow a junior ADU, not just within the primary, but within the space of an accessory structure or a larger ADU?
So before us is the option to allow for both? This, as well as the prior site?
Right, still with the same number of one ADU and one junior ADU.
Okay. My general comment is yes. Yes, I mean, why make it more difficult for homeowners to manage efficient building I mean, why make it more difficult for homeowners to manage efficient building of their property and allow for these additional units?
Question for staff, if allowing this option, it wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to have additional square footage, or would they? Because there's a limit on the total square footage for detached ADU. So if the juniors in there, does it imply that you add this? It could be a larger than it was before.
There are all these kinds of questions. The detached ADU would have, or they would have a certain size, up to the 1,200, and then the junior ADU would come out of that, one would assume. And then, which would reduce the size of the ADU, just as the junior ADU reduces the size of the primary dwelling, the main house.
Okay.
And the junior ADU still wouldn't be able to be more than 500 square feet. It doesn't, the junior ADU doesn't necessarily have to have its own restroom. It can share restroom with the main dwelling and just has a little counter and appliance for kitchen, cooking.
Vice Chair Janoff?
So do we need to specify that? Or maybe, maybe our understanding, but do we need to say that in this scenario where you have a detached ADU and the junior ADU in one building, the total does not exceed 1,200 square feet?
I'm seeing that that might be a good idea from the attorney.
I'm just concerned that we might have a 1,200 ADU and a 500 junior ADU in that scenario, which is not our intent.
Right. And the state requires that you allow up to an 800 square foot ADU. So that would be, well, it'd be 1,300.
Would we need to say up to 1,300 if it's, if it's joined? Can we have two junior ADUs?
Well, that's, no. No, you can't.
Well, I'm just wondering if, if there's a minimum ADU and a maximum or a set junior, then if, if this is the scenario that's brought before the town, we might want to say yes to 1,300 square foot total. I mean, considering that these are ministerial decisions and there's no discretion, the more that we bound that envelope to make it perfectly clear seems reasonable.
It does. And I think we can take that direction and look at it more closely as well, because there are other, you know, regulations pertaining to accessory structures on lots. And so we could look at that and see how that would play out. But the main idea of the junior ADU is that it is within the existing space or proposed space, which becomes, I know, complicated, of a structure.
So if the commission's ultimately interested in providing that direction, we can carry that information forward to the council and then provide that with our findings, and then they can make that decision.
One more question for staff. So relative to Vice Chair Janoff's question, though, you can't, by definition, a junior ADU is within a primary dwelling, so that you can't have a junior ADU within a junior ADU, right?
Well, the state allows the jurisdiction to limit it to that definition, but should you wish to take it beyond that, we can revise that definition. And that's, if that's the direction you're giving, as Mr. Paulson said, we can look at that and move it forward.
But you theoretically could have a 499 square foot junior ADU and a 480 square foot detached ADU. So it, just because it's less than 500 does not make it a junior ADU. So ultimately, it's, you know, kind of semantics, but technically, you could have a detached ADU that's less than 500 and then an attached that's within the existing home that's less than 500. And one of them's going to be junior ADU, and one of them's going to be a regular detached ADU.
Right. I'm thinking we should make, do you, I'm going to ask staff. Would you like us to make a motion and vote on these or just have comments about whether we think it's a good idea or not?
I think it'd be helpful for council's discussion to actually have a motion.
Yeah, since it's not in the first motion, then we'll just have individual motions.
All right. And I think we can do this fairly quickly. So let's, let's do that. So, so this, this option is two different options, which is kind of the A and the B. There's the adding the attached ADU as an option, and then the junior ADU within the detached. So would someone be willing to make a motion about whether we want to do that or not? Commissioner Birch?
I'm going to make a motion that based on the diagrams shown by staff for the two options, I would move to approve or forward a recommendation of approval to council and note some of the conversation that has occurred based on the configuration and square footage.
Is there a second? Commissioner Tabana?
I'll second that.
Okay. Are there any comments from commissioners on this item? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. So the next option is, it says, no accessory dwelling unit, it's in the draft ordinance, and do we want to be more lenient that no accessory dwelling unit may be constructed in front of a primary dwelling that is historic resource to prevent adverse impacts on historic resources? But we, but we could recommend allowing this option to create accessory dwelling units in front of historic resources to add more flexibility. So comments on that? And I don't know if staff wants to clarify any more than that. I don't.
I would just say that pertaining to the public comment that we got, that it's, it's not the intent that this language would preclude the conversion of existing accessory structures or square footage to an ADU in front of a historic resource. So if there's a gatehouse or a, you know, some sort of structure in front of it, or that that could be converted to an ADU.
So this question is whether we allow people to construct a new ADU that isn't there right now in front of a historic resource?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Birch?
I just want to make sure before I make my other comments, I'm clear. So we do have some properties downtown that are these very tiny, original little bungalows, but that's existing. So would this say that, for the sake of keeping it historic, we would allow that to become an ADU, just like, is that semantics correct?
That's correct, because it's existing.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I just want to ask a clarifying question then, Commissioner Hudes. So we, we can't prevent that anyways, or, or is this something we need to vote on? Where they have a detached accessory dwelling unit in front, or it's some, it's not a dwelling unit, but an accessory unit in front. We have to vote whether to allow that or not, or they can automatically do it because of the state law?
They can convert the existing floor area. That would be allowed by state law and by the ordinance as it's written. The question would be, could they build a new ADU in front of the small bungalow? That's, would you, yeah.
Commissioner Hudes?
I would strongly oppose that option. I think it would decrease the value of historic resources, and it would also decrease the value of the neighborhoods and the town to put new construction in front of historic resources. I think that would, we'd be getting some additional dwellings, but we would be, you know, outright attacking our historic character of the town.
Vice Chair Janoff?
Yeah, I agree with Chair Hudes, except that I think what's proposed is the reverse, it currently says that no accessory dwelling may be constructed, and so we're advocating that language continue. But I did want to comment that the benefit of having public testimonies, I hadn't really thought about the concept of these small historic properties being converted to the ADU intact and allowing a new unit, primary residence to be constructed. I would just like to say, having served on historic preservation, it's a brilliant idea to allow that because there've been many, many applications that are asking to tear down the historic because it doesn't accommodate the big new house that the whole family needs. And we're saying, no, you can't do that, but you've got to make it look the same because that's LaScatis's way. And to allow those beautiful little structures to, to shine and be purposeful is something I think is just really brilliant. I thank you for bringing that concept. I, I know Steph has it, but I hadn't in my mind, so I appreciate that. And, and I think anything we can do to preserve the historic integrity of the town by, by not cluttering the front of these properties with an accessory dwelling unit that obscures the elevation, I think is a great idea.
Commissioner Hudes, you had an additional comment?
Just to clarify, those are two, two separate concepts. The, the concept that we heard in public testimony has nothing to do with this option. This option is, says, would you allow the creation of accessory dwelling units in front of historic resources? And I think that'd be a big mistake.
So would someone like to make a motion?
I would move to make a recommendation to council that we do not adopt this option.
Second? Commissioner Badami?
Second.
Okay. It sounds like, does anyone else want to make a comment before we vote? All right. All in favor? Opposed? None? Passes unanimously. Okay. So that's that option. Option, there's four options total. Option three is the new state law does not require attached accessory dwelling units to be allowed minimums in rear and side setbacks of four feet. And we could allow, we could recommend this option for having it go from five feet to four feet. Even though the detached, it's already stated by state law that it's four feet. And if, correct me if I'm wrong, Steph, we could also allow the attached to have four feet instead of five feet. So the question on the table is, do we want to allow attached to go down to four feet?
And maybe just to clarify, right now, the attached ADU would need to meet the setbacks of the primary dwelling. So eight feet in the R-18, 10 feet in the R-110 for a side setback. So this would be allowing even the attached ADU to go down to four feet on the side or the rear.
Vice Chair Janoff?
Yeah, for the reasons I commented on before, I think of reducing that setback to four feet may not make sense for a general circulation standpoint. So I personally would not be in favor of reducing it to the four foot setback at this time.
Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think that an attached ADU, by definition, gives you greater contiguous facade area, and so the perception of greater mass encroaching on space that neighbors assumed they had would be an issue to me. So I don't, again, I don't think that one's worth it.
Okay. Would someone like to, is there any, first of all, does anyone else want to comment? And if not, then would someone like to make a motion on this option? Commissioner Birch?
It sounds like I am going to move that we do not adopt this option.
Is there a second? Commissioner Hudes?
Second.
Okay. Any additional comments? Then I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion? And anyone opposed? No. Passes unanimously. All right. We have one more. It's on page four. An option has been included in the draft ordinance clarifying that an accessory dwelling unit may not be added to an existing second story of a primary dwelling that is historic resource to prevent adverse impacts on historic resources. We could, we could be more lenient and allow to, people to create second story accessory dwelling units on historic resources. Comments or questions from, okay, we have the picture. Commissioner Birch has a question.
I don't think I understand why adding a second story ADU means it has to be higher. What, what drove that particular option?
So the ordinance currently allows for a second floor ADU only in the case where there's already a second floor on a primary dwelling. I think I said that right. And so in this case, when we have a historic structure, such as the one on the left, that has a big sloping roof, but in the rear, there's a second story. So then, when you go to the right, the new ADU is put on the front of the structure on the second story, and it can, has the potential to change the shape of the house, the primary dwelling, fairly significantly. So that's in order to get the plate height, in order to stand, you know, to create more plate height, to get the square footage, basically. Because while a lot of it could be fit under a gable, in order to get more square footage, the plate height goes up.
Vice Chair Janoff?
Just again, recognizing what historic preservation is trying to do in the town, you know, we don't, we don't readily allow the addition of a second story, or a second story addition, even if the historic property has a second story, that substantially changes the overall appearance of, of the historic house. And so I'm not sure why we would be entertaining adding an ADU, which essentially does the same thing, to, to alter the historic appearance of a, of a home. I'm, I'm not sure that makes sense for us to do that.
Commissioner Badami?
I agree with Vice Chair Janoff. I'm strongly opposed to this one. I think it will, it has the potential to impact the character of the historic neighborhood.
And Commissioner Hudes, I thought you had a comment.
I agree.
You agree? Okay. All right. Then if no one else has a comment, would someone like to make a motion on this item? Maybe Commissioner Birch?
I'm on a roll tonight. I am going to move that we do not recommend this option either.
Is there a second? Commissioner Hudes? Okay. If there are no other comments, seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Anyone opposed? No. It passes unanimously. Okay. Great. So that is all the options that staff had in their staff report for us to consider. And we already talked about whether there's appeal rights, and I don't think there would be on the options either. So that concludes the public hearings portion of the agenda, and now we move on to other business. And the, do we have a report from the Director of Committee Development?
Thank you, Chair. So just a couple items. Last week, the town council met, and they adopted the streamlining modifications that were previously considered by the planning commission. They also had another discussion on vehicle miles traveled. We're working with Fair and Peers. They have chosen, as I understand it, to go to a, an option where we will work with Fair and Peers, who will come up with substantial evidence to create our own VMT metrics, because given the circumstances of the town, there's a high likelihood that we cannot meet the state's recommended threshold because we don't have the transportation options, and we don't have densities high enough, which is typically one of the other metrics that allows you to reduce VMT. Secondly, the council a while ago adopted reach codes. Those just went into effect last Friday, I believe, because the California Energy Commission approved them, which is one of the requirements. So those are now in place, so you can't have gas in new homes or add existing, or add new gas lines for a number of things, such as swimming pool heating, fire pits and the like. And lastly, next week, the general plan advisory committee will meet. They'll start looking at individual elements. Next week, we'll be looking at the open space and recreation element, which is, we'll be going to, I think, two a month meetings here for the next few months, going through those elements. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Director Paulson?
And now we move to subcommittee reports. In addition to their service on the planning commission, members of the commission serve on several town committees. Are there any reports tonight? I don't think we need to report on the general plan advisory committee because we talked about, all about that, but.
Commissioner Hudes?
Historic preservation, met earlier today. We considered three items. 251 Littlefield, which we actually approved the design, but did not have to remove it from the historic inventory, as was first thought. So I think we, we were able to do that. 253 West Main, where we approved the removal from inventory with some suggestions for the replacement residence. And 15946 Saravista, which we removed from the inventory as well.
Thank you. And do we also have a conceptual development advisory committee report? Commissioner Badami?
No, we do not.
No, we do not.
Didn't we meet last week?
Commissioner Barnett?
I don't believe we did. Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. We...
Two weeks ago we met, and I think we met two weeks ago at Planning Commission, so I think we reported out at the last Planning Commission, that one. But to recap, I believe it was a project on, off of Mitchell Avenue, which is behind the Laurel Muse site, where they were looking at four detached condominiums, similar to the project that was approved on the corner of Robertson Fisher that had three. This one also had requests for a variance because they were asking for reduced setbacks, and so the committee weighed in on that.
Okay. I apologize for the confusion. I, I thought we did not have a Planning Commission meeting two weeks ago.
You, you could very well be correct. I can barely remember yesterday.
Okay. Okay. Then we move on to commission matters. Are there any other matters that any commissioner wishes to discuss? Okay, seeing none, then thank you all for participating in the meeting, and this meeting is adjourned.